Bienvenidos al Consejo de la Cámara de la Marcha. Señor presidente, presidente, señor presidente, señoray el miembro de la Comisión de la Francia, el miembro de la Comisión de la Tierra, aquí. El miembro de la Comisión de la Verdad, aquí. El miembro de la Comisión de la Verdad, aquí.
Aquí.
El miembro de la Comisión de la Maravilla, aquí. Señorías, presidente. Señorías. Bueno, el miembro de la Francia dijo que no iba a poder participar hoy, así que le pedimos perdón. Y si se disculpa, el miembro de la Francia, por favor.
Sí, por favor.
Todos en favor de, perdón, el miembro de la Francia, por favor, digan sí.
Sí.
Sí. ¿Hay o no? Así que hagamos las plegarias.
Plego a la paz de los Estados Unidos y a la paz de la humanidad. Y a la paz de la humanidad. Una nación bajo Dios, igualdad, libertad y justicia para todos.
Tenemos una proclamación. Y Michelle, que va a estar aquí conmigo, creo que tenemos a Paul Murphy.
¿En el equipo?
Absolutamente, venga ahora. Así que le pedimos una proclamación y luego. Así que esta es la proclamación en reconocimiento de Americor Week de 10 de marzo hasta el 17 de 2019. Mientras el servicio a otros es un hallmark del carácter americano y a lo largo de nuestra historia, los ciudadanos han levantado la cabeza para responder a nuestros desafíos voluntariamente en sus comunidades. Y mientras Americor proporciona oportunidades para casi 75,000 estadounidenses servir su país a través de un compromiso intenso por servir a los no-profits, escuelas, agencias públicas, comunidades y grupos de faith base en todo nuestro país. Y mientras Americor proporcionó el distrito escolar de Port Angeles programa de secundaria después de la escuela con 19,149.75 horas de servicio en 2018. Y mientras los miembros de Americor animan la colaboración y las asociaciones aprovechando millones de voluntarios en servicio y adquiriendo el apoyo de los socios comerciales para aumentar la efectividad de sus iniciativas. Y mientras en Port Angeles, miembros de Americor de diversos edades y antecedentes ayudan a satisfacer las necesidades locales al tutorar, mentorar o mentir a niños y jóvenes, apoyando veteranos y familias militares, restaurando el medio ambiente y respondiendo a los desastres. Y mientras en cambio de sus servicios, los miembros de Americor desarrollan recursos valiosos ganan dinero para continuar con la educación y fortalecer la vida de sus familias y comunidades como un todo. Y mientras en septiembre de 2019, la Nación anuncia el 25º aniversario de Americor saludando a más de 1,000,000 estadounidenses que han tomado la plegaria para hacer las cosas por América. Y mientras Americor Week es una oportunidad para reconocer la dedicación y el compromiso de más de 1,000,000 estadounidenses que han elegido servir su país a través de Americor y sus socios de comunidad y para animar a más estadounidenses a seguir sus pasos en servicio. Por lo tanto, siendo resuelto que yo, Sissy Bruch, presidente de Port Angeles proclame aquí de manera proclamada el 10 de marzo hasta el 17 de 2019 como Americor Week en Port Angeles y exhortar a los ciudadanos a agradecer a los miembros de Americor y a los donantes por sus servicios y a encontrar sus propios métodos para devolverle a su comunidad. Así que gracias. Y les presentaré y gracias a todos. Por favor, déjanos saber quién está aquí.
Gracias, apreciamos la oportunidad de estar frente a nuestra ciudad. La mayoría de las veces los miembros están durante su servicio. Tenemos alrededor de la mitad de nuestra equipo esta noche en Jefferson haciendo clases de educación para niños así que no pueden estar con nosotros, pero tenemos a Katie Young que viene de Texas y ella sirve en Franklin. Y Amy que está haciendo el segundo año de servicio con nosotros, su cuarto en conjunto como Americor. Ella viene de Minnesota y sirve en Roosevelt. Tenemos a Gabby Roderick que viene de Colorado y está en Stevens, que es un colegio de secundaria, por cierto. Qué malos nombres, ¿verdad? Tenemos a Polly Carmel que es una chica local y sirve en Hamilton este año. Tenemos a Bella Monger que sirve en Dry Creek, también local. Y tenemos a Jessie que viene de Colorado, esto es Jessie Fox, y ella sirve en Roosevelt. Tenemos miembros en todas las escuelas a lo largo de la comunidad y servimos durante el día como tutoras y mentores y luego hacemos programación secundaria y servimos la cena, o la cena después de la escuela. Y luego hacemos todo tipo de cosas adicionales como las fiestas familiares en la YMCA o con el club de niños y chicas, tenemos algunos parques que mantenemos y aprovechamos a los voluntarios de la comunidad para salir y hacer otros proyectos, por ejemplo, United. Así que son un grupo ocupado y estoy muy orgulloso de ellos.
Gracias. Gracias a todos por servir, sé que es difícil, mi hijo pasó por esto y sé que especialmente para los que vienen de lejos, de nuevo, es realmente desafiante. Así que gracias, gracias a todos por todo el trabajo que hacen, es muy apreciado aquí.
Algunas de las otras cosas que van a pasar esta noche es que vamos a darle a los miembros del consejo de la cámara la Ora Americor y la próxima semana, la próxima semana, no la próxima, la próxima semana van a servir como miembros honorarios y visitar nuestras escuelas y hacer algo de lectura con nuestros estudiantes. Así que vamos a ir adelante y que ustedes se sienten o vayan a la parte trasera y luego voy a sentarme a la parte de lado y les voy a dar las líneas y luego pueden seguirme. Ustedes deberían estar ahí, sí, gracias. Esta es la Ora Americor que todos los miembros de Americor a lo largo de la nación toman como comienzo de su año de servicio. Dice: "Voy a hacer las cosas por América".
Vaya a hacer las cosas por América.
Para hacer a nuestra gente segura, más inteligente y saludable.
Para hacer a nuestra gente segura, más inteligente y saludable.
Voy a reunir a los estadounidenses para fortalecer nuestras comunidades.
Voy a reunir a los estadounidenses para fortalecer nuestras comunidades.
Basado en la apatía tomaré acción.
Basado en la apatía tomaré acción.
Basado en el conflicto busco el suelo común.
Basado en el conflicto busco el suelo común.
Basado en la adversidad persistiré.
Basado en la adversidad persistiré.
Voy a llevar este compromiso con nosotros este año y más allá.
Voy a llevar este compromiso con nosotros este año y más allá.
Sí, buen trabajo. Yo soy miembro de Americor y voy a hacer las cosas.
Yo soy miembro de Americor y voy a hacer las cosas.
Ahí vamos, justo así. Cada uno va a tener un pin que los hace oficial. Si puedo sacarlos de mi bolsillo. Y ahora son miembros oficiales y pueden buscarlos la próxima semana en servir en nuestras escuelas, no porque no hagan mucho servicio hoy en día. Pero la próxima semana habrá una escuela. Una más, sé. Y ahí vamos. Muchas gracias.
Michelle es mi niña que va a enseñar a niños en una escuela de la Nación. Y ella es de Americor en 2002. Gracias a todos.
Bien, así que continuaremos. Lo siguiente es la publicación. Así que tenemos los libros de lectura aquí, recuerden que cuando lleguen a la luz, por favor, lean su nombre y cuál es su lado en el consejo de la cámara. Empecemos con Edwin Johnson.
Mi nombre es Edwin Johnson, vivo en Port Angeles. El desarrollo económico de la corporación no está en la agenda de hoy pero desde que ha sido así en el pasado, podría ser de nuevo en el futuro. No creo que el EDC deba ser financiado públicamente. Parece ser una organización para promover el crecimiento. Desde que se hizo la situación, la gente viene aquí a cualquier momento. Desde el 1960, la población de la ciudad de Clallum ha casi triplicado a más de 7,000 personas. La calidad de la vida era mejor cuando había menos gente aquí. Los muros de fishing fueron más simples. No tenían ciertos días para el fishing como hay ahora. No solían tener que liberar sangre de la tierra en el hacha como lo hacen ahora. Solían poder mantener la muerte de la acero salvaje en muchos ríos y ríos. Ahora, no hay muerte de la acero salvaje que se pueda mantener. El clavo de azúcar estaba abierto siempre. El terreno de la agricultura, la tierra de la piedra y el hábitat de la luz salvaje se han convertido en negocios y residencia. Necesitamos una economía pero debe ser limitada a la capacidad de los recursos de la tierra para apoyarnos a largo plazo. En algún punto, la economía tiene que dejar de crecer porque los recursos de la tierra no crecen. De lo contrario, nos perderemos los recursos y muchos de nosotros moriremos o en necesidad desesperada. Hay ya mucha gente sin hogar, el crecimiento no los ayudará. Seattle ha estado creciendo rápidamente durante mucho tiempo y es la tercera mayor población sin hogar en el país, en la ciudad de New York y en Los Ángeles. Leí eso en el periódico. En cuanto a la pareja que estaba aquí, cuya renta estaba subiendo por dos o trescientos dólares, ¿por qué estaba subiendo tanto? Por el crecimiento, lo que aumenta la demanda de rentas. El acreedor sabe que puede conseguirlo. El crecimiento también causa demasiado tráfico y causa la necesidad de refugio en el río Dennis debido al aumento del uso de agua. Necesitamos una nueva religión, una que no adora el crecimiento. Si tiene que haber una corporación de desarrollo económico, debe ser apoyada solo por individuos que quieran crecer. El resto de los contribuyentes y contribuyentes deberían no tener que pagar por ello. Si la ciudad quiere gastar dinero en lugar de gastarlo en el EDC, debería ir a la gente sin hogar para tener un lugar donde ir. Gracias por su tiempo.
Gracias. Bill Atkinson.
Buenos días a todos, mi nombre es Bill Atkinson, vivo en Port Angeles, arriba de la milla. Y estoy aquí esta noche para animar al consejo de la cámara a ponerse al día el proyecto de solar de la comunidad con las otras comunidades de Washington State que han elegido aprovechar las grantes estatales para instalar un programa de site que provee energía solar a los residentes a un porcentaje de reembolso que sea económicamente viable. La ciudad tiene, eso es conocido, estuve en el comité de asesoramiento de utilidad la ciudad tiene dos propuestas viables de los contratistas para instalarla este año y para asegurar los precios de este año. Los precios bajaron, en la página final, los precios disminuyeron con el tiempo. Así que para hacerlo más atractivo para los contribuyentes de los precios, necesitamos ponerse al día este año. Y en el espíritu de "Hazlo hecho" que ustedes acaban de firmar, aquí es su oportunidad. Siempre he gustado traer a la gente oportunidades. Y luego, puedes llamar, hay todo tipo de detalles que podría entrar pero yo no quiero. Pero hay un detalle que me gustaría traer a la atención del personal aquí es que todos sabemos que el tren está bajando el camino, a lo largo de la energía y la atmósfera y todo eso. Y así que quiero dirigir nuestra atención a, fuera de la semilla, es por lo tanto, si tenemos los recursos y todo eso. Me gustaría dirigir nuestra atención al libro de Salomón, ¿de acuerdo? Y no soy una persona muy religiosa pero los libros de historia nos instruyen. Y luego el libro de Salomón dice: "Un hombre bueno deja un legado a sus hijos y hijos." Así que aquí es nuestra oportunidad de hacer eso, haciendo lo correcto y poniendo al día el proyecto de solar. Gracias.
Gracias. Colleen Robinson.
Buenas noches, personal y comunidad del consejo, mi nombre es Colleen Robinson y tengo el privilegio de ser la directora ejecutiva de Habitat for Humanity. Conmigo esta noche es Julie Eckert, ella es nuestra directora de comunicación de la comunidad. Tengo papeles para los miembros del consejo, ¿puedo darles uno para cada uno? El financiamiento anual de Habitat, "Un sabor de la península" celebrando socios de la comunidad estará el sábado 13 de abril en el Red Lion en Port Angeles. Tenemos muchos proveedores de comida maravillosas, sabores y dulces proporcionados por restaurantes de Clallum y libretas ofrecidas por wineries locales. El evento es una tarde divertida con buena comida, amigos, la oportunidad de conocer a nuestras familias de socio actual y aprender sobre Habitat for Humanity y lo que hacemos. También tomamos el tiempo para honrar a esas organizaciones, individuos y negocios que han colaborado apoyado y han sido campeones de Habitat Clallum. Es mi placer anunciar que el ciudad de Port Angeles ha sido seleccionado como socio de la comunidad de Port Angeles 2018 donador de premios por Habitat for Humanity de Clallum County. Felicitaciones. Desde 2015, el ciudad de Port Angeles ha mostrado un compromiso y un encorajo por Habitat Clallum al proporcionar consistentemente apoyo notorio a muchos proyectos de Habitat Clallum como "Llama a tu bloque, limpieza de vecindario" y más recientemente, "El panorama de nuestra tienda Habitat" ubicada en 728 East Front Street. Su apoyo a la visión de Habitat de un mundo donde todos tienen un lugar decente para vivir es muy apreciado. En su paquete también encontrarán una invitación a un levante de madera para nuestros dos socios actuales el sábado 16 de marzo a las 9:30 a.m. en nuestra propiedad de Maloney Heights ubicada en las 16th y las 10th Streets. Espero que se unan a nosotros a esta maravillosa celebración mientras avanzamos hacia hacer que la propiedad de la casa sea una realidad para estas dos familias muy merecedoras. Sin asociaciones como Habitat Clallum y el ciudad de Port Angeles construir fortaleza, estabilidad, confianza y refugio para nuestra comunidad no sería posible. Gracias y esperamos muchos años más de colaboración.
Muchas gracias. Ian Nichol.
Hola, soy Ian Nichol, vivo en la 5ª Laurel y estoy aquí para pedir al consejo de la cámara a continuar con la implementación del proyecto de solar de la comunidad. El proyecto de solar financiado por la comunidad es genial para la comunidad y beneficia a todos para los propietarios que no pueden pagar los costos anteriores del sistema solar por sí mismos a los alquileres como yo que nunca tuvieron la opción de solar. Un proyecto como este ayuda a la ciudad a tomar un paso en la dirección correcta hacia la resiliencia energética mitigando el rastro de carbono y nuestro impacto en el medio ambiente y asegurando que estamos avanzando hacia un clima sostenible para las generaciones futuras. Es en el interés de la ciudad continuar con el proyecto de solar de la comunidad un proyecto que muestra al resto del estado que el solar es una opción viable para todas las comunidades de Washington. El proyecto ya ha sido considerado viable por los contratistas los responsables del RFP han cumplido el programa de reembolso actual y han demostrado que el proyecto es también viable para los contribuyentes de los precios. Es hora de que el consejo de la cámara actúe para asegurar que un proyecto de tal importancia para la comunidad continúe. Por último, el ciudad de Port Angeles tiene una obligación de asegurar la resiliencia energética a las poblaciones más marginalizadas y más pobres las mismas poblaciones que serán más adversas a la cambio climático. Por eso estoy pidiendo al consejo de la cámara a pedir al gerente y a todos los jefes de departamentos involucrados en este proyecto a continuar con esta implementación, es lo mejor para nuestra ciudad, nuestro estado y nuestro país como un todo. Gracias.
Gracias. Ed Chad.
Hola, soy Ed Chad, vivo en 307 West Sixth Street. Y también voy a hablar de animarlos a ponerse al día su personal, a animarlos a proceder al proyecto de solar de la comunidad. Estaba interesado en los comentarios que hizo el señor Johnson al principio del periodo de comentarios sobre la forma en que las cosas eran, la forma en que las cosas son ahora y ciertamente no está hablando solo de Port Angeles. Pueden mirar el mundo entero, la población del mundo entero y ver la extensión a la que nosotros como seres humanos hemos pasado por el final de ese cliff y estamos mirando abajo, debajo de nosotros. Y me gustaría darle al señor Johnson la posibilidad de que puede haber algún tipo de desarrollo que podemos hacer que en realidad nos ayudará a volver a la base solar. Y creo que este proyecto es uno de esos proyectos. Si creemos que los humanos pueden descubrir cómo vivir en algún tipo de armonía y sostenibilidad entre sí y nuestro medio ambiente, este es justo el tipo de proyecto, ¿sabes? Sé que ustedes todos, muchos de ustedes han estado bastante involucrados en empezar a trabajar en un plan de acción climática para la ciudad y no puedo pensar en una mejor manera de empezar ese proyecto que hacer esto. También me movió el señor Johnson en la charla sobre los personas que tienen menos en la comunidad y como dijo el señor Nichol esta es otra manera en la que podemos ayudar a la gente a llegar a un punto en el que somos más autosuficientes. Y así, solo desde el punto de vista de sostenibilidad y de justicia hacia el otro, hacia nuestras generaciones futuras, me gustaría que veais de vuelta al personal y les pregunte si hay alguna manera de seguir con esto. Mi comprensión, si entendí correctamente al señor Atkinson correctamente es que ya han habido dos propuestas presentadas para implementar el proyecto este año. Aparentemente, esas propuestas fueron perfectamente viables y parece que hay algún tipo de problema ahí. Por favor, exploremos si hay una manera de hacerlo. Gracias.
Gracias.
Arlene Jensen. Mi nombre es Jensen, soy agricultora en Sisterland Farms. Me mudé a Port Angeles, septiembre de last año, registré para votar una semana después. De lo que entiendo, estas propuestas para el proyecto de solar de la comunidad fueron primero presentadas en noviembre de last año y no se discutió en la reunión del consejo de la cámara hasta febrero. Como gerente de la granja en Sisterland, en realidad tengo un proyecto, un proyecto continuo ahora donde tengo que instalar nueva fachada eléctrica en la propiedad. Tengo tres opciones para suministrar energía a esta fachada eléctrica, puedo usar una batería puedo conectarla a Main Synergy o puedo comprar un panel solar. La inversión inmediata en energía convencional es extremadamente pequeña pero en mi carrera académica, en realidad tuve la oportunidad de estudiar energía combustible, carbón, viento y solar. También crecí entre una barrera hidroeléctrica y una planta de energía nuclear. Sé que el mayor inversión inmediata, que es energía solar dará mayores retornos para nosotros y no solo debido a los retornos energéticos sostenibles sino también porque es absolutamente crítico que invirtamos en nuevas tecnologías. Cuanto más invirtamos en algo como energía solar, paneles y rayas de solar para nuestra comunidad más accesible se vuelve la energía para las personas que nos siguen y nuestras comunidades porque el costo de ese equipo, de esa tecnología va a bajar. Así que aunque estoy trabajando con un presupuesto extremadamente modesto en mi granja, es nuevo tenemos unos 3,000 dólares en capital solo para gastar para comenzar la temporada estoy dispuesta a gastar los 350 dólares que me costan poner un panel solar en mi granja. Ese 350 dólares suma más de 10% del presupuesto que puedo usar para estos costos de startup. Pero creo que si puedo hacerlo en una pequeña granja de vegetales local el ciudad de Port Angeles probablemente se comprometerá a hacerlo también. Ustedes acaban de tomar una oda y todos se levantaron y dijeron: "Basado en la apatía tomaré acción" y realmente me gustaría que veáis que seguís con esa oda. Gracias.
Gracias. Y Kristy Cox.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Kristy Cox y también soy una de las hermanas de Sisterland Farms. Somos una pequeña granja de producción centrada en la agricultura sostenible y la participación ciudadana lo que es una gran parte de por qué estamos aquí hoy. Ya hemos organizado varios eventos para perseguir la lucha contra el cambio climático en el ámbito político y es realmente importante para nosotros y todo lo que hacemos. Mientras vivimos fuera de los límites de la ciudad, nos involucramos dentro de Port Angeles todos los días. Muchos de nuestros suscriptores son residentes y pensamos que es absolutamente valioso que el ciudad de Port Angeles tome una acción en pequeños pasos como perseguir la energía solar. El cambio climático es definitivamente real, todos estamos sintiendo los efectos de ello. Un informe de 2018 de la Nación dice que estaremos sintiendo los impactos del cambio climático tan pronto como 2040. Siento que ya estamos sintiendo esos impactos aquí hoy con los eventos climáticos aumentados, inundaciones, sequías, todas esas cosas que pueden estar inmediatamente vinculadas con el cambio climático. Está a nosotros como ciudadanos, como residentes y como miembros del consejo de la ciudad a tomar el mayor movimiento que podamos. Y dado que ya se ha hecho mucho trabajo en este proyecto y es considerado agradable no veo por qué hay razón para perseguir la acción. Así que aquí estoy pidiéndoles, por favor, perseguir la acción inmediata y conseguir un poco de energía solar en Port Angeles. Gracias.
Muchas gracias, lo aprecio. ¿Hay alguien más en la audiencia que quisiera dirigir el consejo de la cámara?
Buenas noches, David Banner, 316, estuve esta noche hablando en Port Angeles y también estoy hablando en apoyo al proyecto de solar de la comunidad. Han sido algunos puntos muy buenos hechos esta noche y quiero darles a todos y entusiasmarlos. Uno, este es un programa establecido que no está en ningún sentido significativo o perjudicial para la ciudad. El trabajo ya ha sido hecho, son propuestas viables, es muy fácil avanzar. Así que, ¿por qué lo haríamos? Sabes, creo que este programa es una oportunidad para el Port Angeles hacer un punto sobre quiénes somos y quiénes queremos ser. Ofrece una oportunidad para los residentes aquí que no estarían capaces de participar en la energía renovable para simplemente ser modestos parte de eso y tenerlo como parte de su vida diaria. Eso es algo significativo y habla de quién es la ciudad y quién creo que realmente queremos ser. Ahora, entiendo que el personal ha tenido algunas preocupaciones por el avance pero francamente creo que su desempeño proviene de sus preocupaciones. Ves lo que pudieron hacer al poner en marcha el Winter Village, al levantar la cama en el teatro en Lincoln y luego su increíble respuesta a la tormenta de viento. Son un grupo muy impresionante aquí en la ciudad y creo que pueden ser capaces de más de lo que permiten. Así que les exhorto a que denles el encouragement, denles el aprobamiento y que se avancen para hacer que este proyecto sea una realidad. Gracias.
Gracias. ¿Alguien más?
Hola, soy Scott Nabel, director y uno de los fundadores del Dendians Crab y Siffo Festival. Mi oficina está en el centro de la ciudad, en First and Laurel, donde he estado durante 20 años y he pasado por todos los procesos de planeación y los problemas de departamento, así que estoy aquí para hablar en apoyo del nuevo proyecto de parking de desarrollo residencial, un restaurante en el centro en apoyo al Centro de Artes de Profe. Entre las cosas que he hecho durante los últimos 15 años es hacer mucho planificación de conferencias y eventos. Puedo decirte que el parking será uno de los primeros problemas para que el Centro de Artes de Profe sea exitoso. Como planificador de conferencias, quiero saber que tengo parking dedicado, no solo hay miles de lugares de parking en el centro. Así que creo que eso es realmente esencial para hacer completar todo el plan traer conferencias y convenciones a la ciudad. conferences and conventions to town. If you have a major conference, they're going to be staying at several different properties. And even though the Elwell Hotel will be closer, you want to be onsite to park. The other thing I wanted to mention is I've been working the last couple of years with the clamber family in Ocean Shores, where I produce a couple festivals, including the Razor Clam Festival, which is coming up on the 16th and 17th, if anybody wants to drop down to Ocean Shores and do some clamming. And they run one of the best restaurants, actually two of the best restaurants, Ben's Fish Shack, and Ron is a very dedicated community person. I pretty much live at his restaurant, and it's something, even though we have lots of good seafood and other things here, the Fish Shack concept, which I think people all understand, chowder, crab cakes, and fish and chips, is going to be perfect downtown. And in addition, I can say for Ron, he's one of the most committed people in Port Angeles, in Ocean Shores, and would be in Port Angeles as well in terms of supporting the community. So overall, I think this is a great project, really brings to fruition a lot of the dreams of planning for downtown, the park, the Performing Arts Center, parking, more restaurants. And I think, of course, you have to solve and deal with the regular parking issues that have been ongoing, but overall, I think this is a great project, and I would urge you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else who would like to address any concerns?
Hello, my name is Leila Reyes. I live in Port Angeles, Washington. I have been a vendor at the farmers market since the 90s, and I see a need for an artisan market. I've talked with the farmers market, and they would like to see one too. And so anyway, I'm going to be talking to the planning department and get the ball rolling, and I just wanted to let the word out.
Thank you so much. All right, last call, anybody else?
If nobody else. My name's Mike Doherty, 617 South B, and I'd like to thank the council for a couple of the ones, as others mentioned, getting busy on the climate action plan. We're way behind, but it's never too late to start. And thank you for the participation in that about two years ago when the RCND, now the annual DC, did the vulnerabilities adaptation study funded by a grant. And I hope somehow commerce might further cooperation between the cities in the north end of the peninsula and the two counties to use that study as a basis, because there are an awful lot of strategies discussed among all the groups that attend it, cities, counties, ports, tribes, in that document. So it's kind of a laundry list of good things. Many are barred, but at least it's planning ahead. I'd support those comments, I've concurred with people who spoke in favor of the community solar. I hope the city rebates the money that's the true value of the power back to the bucket in the room, or like our PUD where they tried to cut the revenue back to the homeowner in half. That wasn't very popular, so I hope you the other fully fund back to the homeowner. And then a couple other things. I'm hoping the city is looking ahead to electrifying the city water pole. I hope you're looking ahead to put solar panels on the reservoirs, all the city buildings, urging the school district, the college. There's an awful lot of relatively cheap space around to install solar panels and become somewhat energy independent upon the peninsula. As to small applications, just residential, a little bit smaller, like this farm example, back in the early 80s, the PUD sponsored a workshop, and you literally went over to Wayne and his wife's name, Fistwater's house on Fifth, and for $25 fee paying for materials, you went home with a solar panel put on your house. So for farm use, you know, PUD, citylike could sponsor those small component applications of solar. And with the bigger applications for the city buildings, of course, you're modeling good behavior for residents up in our area, so there's energy independence, and you do a great job, I think, on weatherization, the window program, those things. When you can get some money from federal sources or State Department of Commerce or State Energy Office, and I know Jake Bye, who was raised in Port Angeles, day job is Washington Energy, he'd still be a good ally, and as he gained seniority in the House, he's always looking to get smaller towns, cities, rural Washington areas, trying to participate in some of those large grant programs. So he'd be a friend of Port Angeles. And so, thanks again also for all those conservation measures, and as everybody knows, people like to say, conservation is our cheapest source of new power. So thank you for doing all you do in that area.
Thank you so much. All right, so we will close this public hearing right now. There will be another one at the end of the meeting, and we can move on. So we've got the public hearing, we're supposed to start at 6:30, so council, are you okay? Can you just move to that directly, and we'll come back to the other items?
Just late items, I guess I want to ask, because we talked about this at our joint meeting last week, at the UAC and the council, or continuing the conversation of why we decided to discontinue the community solar program. So I just want to check, does the modeling go tonight, if that's going to be on the next city council meeting agenda, or is that going to be on the UAC agenda?
I'm wondering, I guess that would be a staff question at this point, because I believe it was at the UAC.
That's correct, it's on the next UAC agenda.
So we will begin the public hearing. So to declare a state-owned parcel, the surplus property, who's going to take that?
Mayor, I'll take that. This evening, we're very excited to again present an opportunity for downtown Port Angeles relative to the surplus of a city property in the downtown that will enable the future development of multifamily apartment units, as well as retail space, as well as long-term parking for the downtown. It is certainly the city's goal to achieve a no-net loss in parking for the downtown, but I want to encourage council to, at this point, take the opportunity to reopen the public hearing that was continued to this meeting, take additional comment. I do think it's important, there were a number of outreach efforts since the last meeting where there were discussions and information provided to some of the individuals who had questions and concerns, so it's my hope that all of those concerns have been addressed, and we're encouraging council this evening, following the public hearing, to move forward by surplusing the property and ultimately also adopt a motion that surpluses on the basis of adopting the February 5th council meeting proposal that was submitted by Mr. Dupont.
Great. So we will open the public hearing. So anybody in the audience who would like to speak to this matter, please call for it.
My name is Beth Witters. I am a resident of Port Angeles, downtown business owner, and vice president of the Downtown Association. On behalf of the board of the Port Angeles Downtown Association, I want to thank the city council for postponing the decision to make the property surplus from last month. It gave us an additional two weeks for conversations with our membership. With that additional time, we were able to talk to many members of the association, have a special board meeting, and to get answers for many of our questions. I want to thank Allison Barke for bringing answers to our special board meeting, and Mark Abshire from the chamber for hosting a meetup with Mr. Abshire and the interested For the record, PADA is still concerned about public free parking areas being sold to private entities, but are excited by the possibilities. Another concern is that any revenue from the sale of the city-owned downtown property hooks like it would go into the general fund instead of being reinvested downtown. We'd like to strongly encourage that the city set aside these funds for such items as crosswalk safety improvement, speed limit enforcement, maintenance of the current parking lots, and being helped for development of other city-owned parking structures. Downtown Association very much wants to be involved in future growth of downtown, and I strongly advertise on both the city management, its departments, and with the city council. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else out there would like to speak to this item? Anybody else? All right, so I guess with that, we can close the public hearing. And council, is there any discussion?
Yes, thank you, council, for agreeing to postpone it from last meeting because of our weather emergency. The Downtown Association really deserved to be consulted on this new project, and I feel that that was the right thing to do. However, it's time to move forward, and I am going to make a motion and then discuss the motion. I make a motion declaring that the parcel, if sold to Anayan Shores LLC and developed as proposed at the February 5th council meeting, is surplus to the operation of the city of Port Angeles.
Same.
So we have a motion on the table for a second. Is there any discussion?
I would like to address my motion. The city has been making giant strides this past decade. Twelve years ago, the VA Forward Committee began to discuss improving our downtown waterfront because we are an international host city, but we had such a rundown waterfront that the locals didn't flock to it. It was, people coming into Port Angeles were thrilled at the side of the mountains, but not thrilled at the waterfront once they got close. And it did not encourage development of our downtown, and frankly, our downtown was in decline and suffering for lack of new interested businesses. And so I just see so much has happened. We have a lovely waterfront, we have English and swollen names on our streets and our waterfront downtown, we have beautiful beaches and parkways. We're going to have a $45 million state-of-the-art performing arts center, conference center on the waterfront. That'll be an iconic building for our city, and that's so future generations will be just thrilled at what's happening. We set the foundation through all our councils and all our committees and all our work to this point to help generate positive new building in our downtown area. I'm very pleased with what we've been presented by Mr. Dupont, and I'm looking forward to all of us being at the groundbreaking and then, most importantly, at the ribbon-cutting of not only the conference center, but Mr. Dupont's project, so I will be supporting this motion.
Anybody else in the council who would like to speak to this?
Thank you. I also will be supporting this, I think it's a wonderful thing for the downtown area. I firmly believe that to revitalize the downtown area, having people live in the downtown area is critical, and so that's one step in the right direction. This element, or this proposal adds additional parking spaces which are critical to the downtown area. We know that parking is very important with the new facilities that are coming into play, the Performing Arts Center and so forth, so the city doesn't have the staff or the finances to do this, so to turn this over to the private sector to do it is just, to me, is absolutely the right thing to do, and I congratulate Mr. Dupont on the design and his courage to move forward with this.
I just wanted to say, I'm really excited about the project, I'm really excited about the idea of having housing downtown, more housing downtown. I have not heard directly from, but indirectly from a number of people who are concerned about the actual design, and I think it's important to just point out at this point that what we're, the action we're taking tonight is just locking in the concept of what's going to happen and not necessarily the actual design of it. We don't necessarily aren't architects and aren't going to be designing it, but I just think that's important to note, that what we're locking in is the concept that's been presented, and that the design phases probably yet to come, or at least as it will be presented to us.
I'm going to support it, it needs a new look, and this is going to add a massive amount of extra parking. I realize that some of those downtown folks that are living there are going to be taking up some parking, but I think the staff is thorough in making sure that they mitigate any extra parking that we lose, that we get it back. For the Fine Arts Center across the street, that's, I mean, it'll be a whole new look to downtown, and I think that's something that residents should be excited about, and I do agree with council member Moran that the start of this is getting people living downtown, and I'd like to see more of that converted into living downtown in some of our exterior buildings, and this is a good step in that direction.
I lived in walking distance of downtown, and it's a huge difference just people walk downtown and, you know, go to a restaurant, or go to an event, or go to a store, and really, the few times that I drive downtown, I realize what people are talking about, parking issues, but we really need to address that as a community. So I welcome more conversations with the Downtown Association as people are thinking about these big new developments in downtown. It's really important for us to work as a community, to understand how parking works, and to address it in a way that furthers our goals. So I just want to read the short, two-paragraph introduction to the chapter on parking in the book Sustainable Transportation Planning by Jeffrey Tomlin. It says, "In every city, sufficient outdoor wheel parking is necessary for the success of most businesses and for the quality of life of car-eating residents. But how much parking is sufficient? How much is too much? Indeed, given the cost of building parking, too much parking may be just as bad..."
Point of order, then, mayor, we're discussing a surplus and, sorry, as interesting as that may be about parking, it doesn't pertain to our surplus.
It actually does, because it says that on number three, it says, "Adopt a motion declaring the parcel is sold and develop as proposed." In the develop as proposed, there's parking, and that's what this is about.
And just to be clear, council member Merit had mentioned parking as well, and there was no point of objection at that point, council member Kidd. So this is the second time you've tried to stop me talking about parking in relation to our issues, and it's pretty key, as you'll hear. Thank you. "Indeed, given the cost of building parking, too much parking may be just as bad as too little for economic success. If your city wants to focus on one topic for reducing traffic congestion, improving housing affordability, cleaning the air, lessening climate change, making government more efficient, and enlivening the economy, all at the same time, then it should focus on parking." And it mentions some other chapters that talk about details of parking, like parking cash-out programs, stuff like that. And then for even more information, consult Dan Schu's book, The High Cost of Free Parking, which should be on all planners' bookshelves alongside Jane Jacobs' writings. Thank you.
And I too will be supporting this development, because I believe that it is, it will be vital for our downtown. I know I've had conversations specifically about parking, because today we may need some of the parking, but tomorrow, if the electric car or the self-driving cars are going to come about, then maybe some of that parking can be converted into more housing, which I think will be more important. So yes, so I will be supporting this as well. So I don't know if there's any further discussion, but we do have a mark on the table and a second. So all those who think it's a motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So it passes to you, Mayor.
I'm very proud of the council. We are really moving forward to enhance our downtown. I congratulate all of you for being part of this.
Well, we'll go back to the agenda with late items. Are there, council, are there any late items that you have? And I'm going to tell you, I have one. I was asked this weekend if we could write a letter of support for the lower L O column tribe. They are working on a, I'm going to just pass the graph that they sent them. And they are working on a head start slash childcare facility, and they would like us to help them with this project application. So before I sign any letter, I thought I would get your input on it. So have we taken other considerations outside of the board? Yes. So we do that at number four, are there considerations? Staff, is there any late items on the agenda?
Madam Mayor, we have no additional late items. Thank you.
So let me read the consent agenda. Or are there any consent items that may be overlooked or ignored?
Madam Mayor, I do have a correction to the consent agenda that might help with some of the discussion. On page E35 of your packet, I'll note that we did have an incorrect dollar amount in the first paragraph of that memorandum, which had indicated $455,000 approximately for this project. In fact, the project came in at $42,177, which was substantially below the budget. So I wanted to make that correction on the record. Thank you.
Any other items?
Let me pull three and four, please. I'm going to pull three and four, please.
So we'll pull three and four. All right, so let me begin just reading the consent agenda. The expenditure reports from February 9th, 2019 to February 22nd, 2019, in the amount of $3,035,259.30. Peabody Heights Reservoir Cover Cleaning and Repair, to approve and authorize the city manager to award and sign a contract for the amount of $50,654.20. Craig Avenue Road Reconstruction Project, final acceptance. Accept the project as completed, authorize staff to proceed with a closeout and release the retained of the amount of $4,280.50 upon clearances. And Port Angeles Public Safety Advisory Board, approve all the appointments. Parks Recreation and Redification Commission, approve the appointments. And Community Medicine, authorize the city manager to sign memorandum of agreements.
Have we heard the consent agendas, right?
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
Just like to add that I want to thank all the applicants for the different advisory boards. In this case, we're approving the Public Safety Advisory Board and Parks Recreation and Redification Commission. And when we have more applicants than positions on those, some people don't have the chances to serve, even though they take themselves out there, put their application forward, maybe did an interview. And I think it's just really important that people know that we value them as applicants, even if they're not ultimately selected, but we're willing to decisions on those points.
Thank you. And thank you for that. And also to let you know there are more positions open, so please relax. All right, so we've got a motion on the table and a second. Any further discussion? All those who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes me down nicely. So let's go to item number, I guess item number three, and that's E35.
It's simple, you're refusing my cell come through four because my employer is the company who did the repairs. Not that I worked on it, but...
In that case, Madam Mayor, I move to approve items three and four as have been referred to as...
Actually, I do, I didn't read anything.
Oh, okay, you would read them.
Okay, I will read items three and four. First and second alley emergency sewer repair, final acceptance. Accept the repair project is complete, authorize staff to proceed. And project closeout and release the retained bond upon clearances. And then before is a 20-inch water main emergency sewer repair, final acceptance. Acceptance for emergency repair project, authorize staff to proceed with the project closeout and release the retained bond upon clearance.
Excellently read, I look to approve.
Just a quick, quick note, I'd like to add the language at number three as amended.
As amended, thank you. Okay. Second?
Yes. Okay. So we have a motion on table and a second. Any further discussion? All those who favor the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes me down with one question. Yes, so... Okay, let's move to other considerations, the rediscovery and community paramedic.
Thank you very much, Council. Chief Smith and Chief Vieda are going to be in Congress somewhere, so it's falling on me to introduce Amy Miller and Dan Montana. Amy Miller, who was just recently chosen Assistant of the Year, we understand you. And Dan Montana, who's a firefighter. Dan Montana is a firefighter department, the Port Angeles Fire Department, and they are going to give you a very brief update on projects that they are working on, rediscovery and the new community paramedic program. I can't tell you how incredibly proud I am of these two and the work that they do. All I do now is move paper from one side of my desk to the other, but these two are out in the weeds every day doing the real work and what they do, what they accomplish is incredible. And so they're just going to take a couple minutes now to just give you a quick background on the programs that they're working with and even update on how they're doing.
Question you made. Hi, everybody. So I'm Dan Montana, I'm a community paramedic. Does everybody know what a community paramedic is?
No.
Yeah, nobody does. Actually, as it turns out, I introduce myself like that all the time and everybody's like, "Oh, nice." Yeah, and actually, as it turns out, two months ago before I started this position, I really didn't have an understanding of what it is. So what a community paramedic is, well, my job is, is to try to reduce the usage of 911 system and to try to reduce the amount of inappropriate ER visits. Now, the way that I do that is by being a really good patient advocate for people that don't have one. So with everybody in this room, or a lot of people in this room, we all have a huge support network. When we get sick or we get ill, there's always people around that we can count on. Not everybody in this community has that. And so that's kind of what I do. I find the people that are kind of lost in the system, that are using the 911 because they don't know what else to do, and those are the people that I go help. I help them connect the dots and get them on the right track.
This is my fireman, Daniel Montana. You gave me permission. So I'm Amy Miller. I head up the rediscovery program, which is outreach with the Port Angeles Police Department. And we've been doing that since June, a little bit more aggressively since October. And a little bit about what we do is we do, we do a lot of everything. I spend about 20 to 25 hours a week in a car with one of the officers and we ride around Clallum County and we do outreach. We go into encampments, we look for folks that are vulnerable and marginalized and offering services, let them know that there are services that exist and that they don't have to continue in the situation that they're in. And so we do whatever is really asked of us. Recently, I started getting referrals from the Clallum County Corrections Facility. They've made my phone number a free call, so that's busy. We've also got our first couple of referrals from our Border Patrol. So we're really branching out with the different law enforcements locally. We have a navigator that works solely out in Squim, so we have somebody out there that's doing what I do in here. In January, I was in this very room and heard all about the community paramedic program from Ken's presentation. And immediately after the meeting, I went up to Ken and said, "I want in. I want me a fireman." And I got one. And so we started right away. I immediately knew that this would work. And so I asked Daniel to give me some notes from the first time we went out and I just wanted to share a little bit about our very first outreach day, which by the way, you started the program on like the 5th of January, I think.
Right.
And we went out on the 10th of January and we spent a couple of hours together. And it's a lot like when I go out with the officers, except for I'm in a big red truck.
Which is way better.
Yeah, well, I'm, oh God. No comment. And so we went out. I had, we did home visits. I had a young lady that had a recent heroin overdose that we wanted to check in on and she had a lot of medical issues. Perfect. So he came on a home visit with me, or rather I with him, and we were able to talk with her about her medical needs, make some appointments that she needed and made sure that she had a plan to get to those appointments. Immediately after that, Daniel showed me his advocacy skills at North Olympic Health Network where I had introduced him to somebody that I'd been working with for many months who had been on the street for two years and recently housed, but still really struggling with taking care of himself and had a lot of ongoing infections and stuff. And so Daniel took me over to NONE, got this guy an appointment in like 20 minutes for like the same day. We went back to the, his new home, picked him up from in the truck and brought him to a doctor's appointment. That was amazing. This guy would not get to the doctors with just me watching him to do it and they have built a special relationship now. And Daniel continues to check on him, which is what is needed. And he still asks for that support now. I think the biggest story for me, because I'm not used to those kinds of actual lifesaving events, was that same day, we did some outreach to the Salvation Army and we ran into a young lady who the staff, you know, were concerned about and she didn't look like she was doing well. And so he, I wouldn't say it was a white horse necessarily, but he grabbed his...
It's a pile of horse.
Yeah. He grabbed his medical bag and just went to work with this young lady. And I was kind of just talking with other folks and kind of keeping that clear. And this young lady had a lot of stuff going on that she probably did not understand or know about. She had multiple abscesses in her leg. No, I'm talking. Yeah.
So the person that I was introduced to, when I saw her, I could tell that she was extremely sick. She had been to the ER that day, that morning. She didn't like the ER staff, they didn't like her, that's a common story, it's all fine. She left without being assessed. She came to Salvation Army to get some food, her boyfriend, her father was with her and he said, "Yeah, she's just not doing really good." I said, "Did you guys do heroin today?" They both said, "Yes, they did it in their thigh." Okay, so she's, she's really not tracking with me and as a medical person, you're like, "Okay, this person's done heroin, obviously that's going to alter them a little bit and they're not going to track." But she didn't look sick and as I looked more at her, I could tell that she had a bunch of swelling in one of her legs. And so I was able to kind of put the pieces together and say, "Okay, you guys are shooting heroin in your muscles, right? That causes infection." So she had abscesses in her legs and, but she still didn't want to go to the hospital. And so I had to work with her and I actually had to work with the emergency room. I called them and said, "Hey, I'm sending this gal back in. She's sick. Put everything aside and just kind of deal with her." And as it turns out, yeah, and then I get a call from my, my crew who shows up and says, "Oh, you're supposed to limit our 911 calls. Good jobs," you know? I know, I know, I know, but, and they ended up taking her in. She had a severe infection. She was actually septic and that day, the crew got to visit her again as they took her to the airport because they flew her out to Harborview that day because she was in renal failure.
So for me, that was huge and I, I hope it sounds huge to you guys because we, as a part of our outreach, saved a life. I mean, I don't know how long you can live with that, with renal failure, but that was really huge to me. And that was our first day.
Number one.
It was our first little hour.
It's what we did.
Yeah.
It's what we did.
So since then, we have been making time for each other at least once a week, going out and doing outreach. We try to share the responsibilities and we'll do some of the visits that he's got on his agenda and I have found myself to add a little bit of value in those and he graciously comes with me when we do outreach to Salvation Army or the shelter. I didn't pay attention to how much time I have left, but another really, really just cool partnership that we have been able to work together on is with the shelter over the recent storms when everything kind of just came to a riding halt around here. Daniel and I were still out there working and we went to the shelter almost for you on a daily basis. And he was able to connect folks with immediate medical consults when care if needed and that is something that my folks don't get. It's very difficult to get them to accept treatment and so when you're coming to them and you can make a joke or two, even though they're not funny, it is really helpful. And his bedside manner is... No, it's, it's, I mean, without that, I think the outreach would be, you know, not as beneficial. But I just wanted to share with you guys that it's working. We appreciate your support. We appreciate all of your support. I think we are getting referrals and folks kind of just calling in, we're taking them from everywhere and anywhere. So hopefully you guys have some questions and we're here.
What a great partnership. Thank you so much for all you do and I would like to hear more of these things as the year progresses because this is something that I know our community is missing and so I am very, very thankful to both of you. This has been really, really important.
Is Dan Montana your real name? It's too perfect. It's not like our cowboy. The Dan Rafferty.
Yes. So one thing that I do want to point out is that this partnership doesn't happen anywhere else on the peninsula. Kitsap County, Jefferson County, it only happens right here. It's, it's a partnership that has worked around the nation for decades, though. In the Northwest, we're kind of used to being kind of on the forefront of technology and treatments. And so the community paramedic program, the more people that I talk to, they're really tied together with the social work because you stink, she stinks at paramedicine, right? I'm a horrible social worker.
I know that I stink.
But we're really good, you know, together. And that's, but it's just, it, it's a program that doesn't exist and it's, it's really helping people in a way that they can't be helped any other way in a community. So thank you again for your support. I appreciate it.
Maybe Dan Montana.
While we're having this conversation, not, not to take away from the stories in the ground, which is so important, but bigger picture is that this prevention saves overall costs in city government. And there's a lot of research about how, you know, we help people take care of basic needs, we help people be preventative in the medical care, housing or whatever else they need, and that's going to stay in the long run, are reducing the number of 911 calls or emergency room visits. Are we tracking that in this program and what we're doing here in Port Angeles?
Yeah, absolutely. That's, that's kind of the key to the success of the program because otherwise it's, you know, just another guy driving around in a fire engine thinking he's kind of cool. You know, it, it does have to save money. You know, I can, every day I can tell you a story about how something that we did or something that I did saved a hospital, if it saved an ER, if it saved, you know, something like that. Finding the way to track that and it's something that we're working on. Once again, this program just began and so we're kind of trying to figure out as, as we go. There's a lot of things that will be in place that will make the program more able to show the success eventually. It just takes time, you know, to, and I was already on the payroll, so they kicked me out in the streets and like, "Okay, let's figure this out as we go." But, but yeah, that's going to be kind of the key for multiple different reasons. So we'll be able to show that soon.
That'd be great to see. Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. All right. Good job. Thanks.
I have one other thing for you that I forgot to give you. So this is, this is our challenge coin from the fire department. So a challenge coin is something that military and service organizations use to kind of celebrate who they are. And wouldn't we help you put the flag up for at the Lincoln School? I told you I was going to get you one of our challenge plans.
You did.
Forgot, so anyway, there it is.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
That was inspiring. Thank you. All right, back to business here. The next item is the lodging tax advisory committee. So in front of, on the dais, you should see a complete package of all the applicants for lodging tax that committee has discussed and we actually have a selection to move forward. So there are three different components for this. The first one is the folks that collect the lodging tax and the three people that sit on the there are not, so we need... And the three people that fit on the there are, so we need two, and we have three applicants for that. So the two people selected by the committee are Dominique Oliver and Colleen Tuganow. And then the second area is the folks that receive lodging tax dollars, like for marketing. And so for that, we have Christine Lilly and Kim Reynolds. And we have two applicants and two positions. And then for the final position, we have David Mattern, who applied for as a member at large. And we have now two openings for that, so we need two more folks to help us in that committee. That's who we have. So, that is the committee's recommendation. And looking for approval from the council to, by those folks to come and join us.
I move that we approve the applicants to the lodging tax advisory committee as presented by the subcommittee for selection.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All right, seeing none, all of those in favor of the appointments, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So it passes the members. So thank you, subcommittee. The Association of Washington City Scholarship nominee. So we've gotten one nominee, we've gotten one scholarship. So we do still have to wait in case anybody nails them in. But I guess I would like to ask the council if we do not receive any more, if we can move this existing scholarship application forward. It would be Jackie Young.
If it's the only one, then I think, I mean, yes, if we end up with more, then we probably need to look at them. But I don't see any reason to not forward an application that you receive. So I move that we approve the application for the AWC scholarship.
Second.
So at this point, should we not receive any in mail? This is the application.
I will amend my motion. I move that we approve the application for the AWC scholarship unless we receive more applications.
Second.
The challenge is if we get another one in the mail, I think the deadline is too soon for us to convene as a council. So maybe after this motion, we want to make that a motion that in the event that we get another one by mail, we decide to delegate selection to Mayor Brook or someone else, or a subcommittee.
Counsel, I do, I do believe that delegation already occurred at the last meeting to Mayor Brook. So she does have council authority to make that decision at this time. But I would also mention that by approving, it's important that we communicate that this isn't approval of the actual scholarship ultimately. We're forwarding a recommendation for this individual to compete for a scholarship among many, many other cities within Washington State for AWC. I just want to make sure that's clear.
Thanks for clarification. All right, so we have a motion on the table on the second. Any further discussion on that? Okay, all those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the last one is that letter. So I passed around the letter that was given to me as a draft potential submission for the tribe. That said the tribe is in the process of building a Head Start child care facility and they would like our support for this project. It is a project that I worked on previously before leaving the tribe. So it was written with that intent and modestness, but I think we can modify the writing almost. I said this was just a draft and see whatever you guys feel like makes sense.
A couple of things. Can you just describe what makes the Head Start program different from the other one?
Yes, so the child care has a different curriculum altogether. Head Start really is like, almost like pre-kinder party, where they really start working on language skills, they start working on cognitive skills. Where child care is, it's child care. They have the opportunity for some of those, but the curriculum isn't as rigorous. And so the idea is having those two together, for the tribe, they're allocated certain slots for Head Start. The idea that now that if they have the space, they can be able to allocate more spaces to Head Start. So therefore, the children can have more training. And there is a massive shortage for the so, and their facility, I don't know if you've gotten a chance to visit it, but it is extremely crowded right now and with the long winters.
So you want something like approval of your signature letter or just council approval of this letter?
I think it's council approval for me to sign this letter.
Okay.
Or something like that.
I move to approve the signing of this letter of support for all tribes' application for 20th Indian Community Development, one grand from the Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Second.
No, I just wanted to say that my wife was a teacher for almost, well, a long time. And she was involved in the Head Start program early on in her career. And I think this is just one thing, and I'm really thrilled that the tribe is engaging in this. It's for underprivileged children, it really gives them that step that they need to embark on a meaningful education career, if I can put it in lofty terms. But having said that, the Head Start program is really, really important and I thoroughly support this. And I congratulate the tribe on their moving forward with this.
I'm very glad to see that, so, yes, thank you. So we've got motion on the table on the second. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, contrast and purchasing. Would be Avenue Water Main Replacement Project final acceptance, Jay Ward.
Good evening, council. City staff is recommending to the council accept the would be Avenue Water Main Replacement Project, 04-15, as time of final acceptance. The work was inspected and included at an amount of $456,000, $178.95 for the five percent retained for the project being held. The workout's completed was approximately 1,400 feet or eight inch asbestos water line that's abandoned and replaced with eight inch ductile liner water main along would be avenue between rural and body streets. The work was completed last summer, so this is communicated at final acceptance.
Any questions?
Just have my quick question. Now, the bottom has final cost $455,000 change, and I propose to support $56,000 and some change.
Yeah. So the difference between the bottom and the bottom, final last $455,000, that's the project cost that we have, the rest you pay out to the contractor. There's about $450,000 within the finance department, that's a discrepancy there. It's going to build out, so that's the delta between there. So the number we want to accept now is $456,178.95 in our budget.
In our budget, yes.
Thank you.
I move that they accept the would be Avenue Water Main Replacement Project number WT 04-15 as complete, authorized staff to proceed with project closeout and release to the amount of $20,962.69 upon receipt of required licenses.
Second.
All right, is there any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes the members. We are on to council reports. Councilor Kidd.
Thank you. I have a special report this evening. Ms. Bumzile Miambo Nakuka, the executive director of the United Nations Commission on the Status of Women and Undersecretary General of the United Nations, has invited me to attend the International Women's Day event, March 8th at the United Nations in New York City. I'll be on my way tomorrow. And the UN observation of international women's observance will actually be held in the United Nations chamber. And I'm a delegation of five women from the USA senior, USA and senior university ladies that have been specifically invited to represent senior women at this event. And I'm very excited. And I will be representing Washington State and also the local seroptomists, who they have a separate international delegation, but our local seroptomist club, one of the focuses of the International Women's Day, one of the focuses is to stop human trafficking. And our local seroptomist clubs have been working on that project also. So I'll be also representing them. And I'm very excited to have this opportunity.
Congratulations, that's a great honor. That's a great honor.
That's pretty good, follow there. Board meeting last week, everything's moving ahead, permits and everything. Hopefully we can get that so that it stays on track. And also something, just to point out, food for thought. There is possibly a new restaurant that will be occupied in Galway County. And there are several events in this city that get out nine o'clock-ish and nobody's open. So take note, if you own a restaurant, there is actually one restaurant that is open. So folks that want to go out, I know that the Bushwhacker, who's now closed, they actually made a point of being open on the nights that they knew there was an event that went on at Grand Lake that actually stayed open. So, not really complaining, but just something to think about.
All right, last Monday, I think it was, went to the opioid presentation given by Dr. Ernang with the health officer. It was really interesting, it was encouraging to see progress. I realized that the last time I saw that information was when I was running for council and it was the 2016 data, which is strikingly disturbing, particularly compared to last year's data. So I encourage all of you to look at that. I was going to ask her to send me her PowerPoint if she'd be willing to, and I'd be happy to share that with everyone. One of the other pieces of that that was really interesting to me was something I learned was the training for carrying Narcan. And I have had questions from constituents about why we are handing out Narcan for free and letting people carry it to say to addicts, but we're not, you know, passing out EpiPens and things like that. And I think it's not that people who have life-threatening allergies aren't important, but people who have addiction issues are also important, members of our community. And often, by statistics, are as likely to be someone who lives outside as they are to be someone who's your child's friend on their basketball team or a parent of someone on your child's baseball team, who might find themselves in an overdose situation. And so I think that's important information. I did decide to do the training and get some Narcan, so I'm happy to have that. I also didn't realize that it's inert if you don't have opioids in your system. So it's not something that you can hurt someone with if they're not having overdose, which is part of the reason why I think it's really great to get it out into the community and have it available because we can't hurt someone, but we might save someone. And often I think that, it sounds like and it makes sense to me, that often that is the impetus for making a life change for people. So I'm grateful to know that we're working on getting, having that more available so that we can save more lives and help potentially change lives in that as well. So that was interesting. I also think it's important to consider, because we haven't met with our legislative team, the fact that both the school district and probably the peninsula college are going to be making layoffs in the next week or two, and what that means for our community. I think we don't have room for, you know, that a lot of those people aren't going to have other jobs to apply for. So, and both of those institutions are funded, dependent on the model that the legislature creates for them. So I think that's something I hope that our, sadly I can't go at this point, but I hope that whoever does go, I think Michael's the alternate, so I'm assuming he'll fill in for me, will potentially bring that up with our representatives and senators. Oh, and I also wanted to just make a quick shout out to the Laurel and Fallon Tribe for letting the youth baseball groups use their field because none of the city fields are great for skills training, skills testing. So I appreciate that you're able to use their fields.
I have something really mundane that I was going to share, but it's already all set. I'm just going to pass and we'll bring that later.
Hi, cheers.
How are you?
Oh, I'll put my mic on this time, Mike. Three things, really. First of all, the Second Annual Maritime Festival is coming up in June. First speaking June, June 8th and 9th. I'm on the planning committee for that. And we already have locked in the tall ships, both the tall ships will be back to Port Angeles. And so it'll be, and Scott Nagel, who was here briefly, is also providing a mini prep test for the maritime vessel. So it's going to be expanded, the port is also going to be actively involved. So I'm really excited about this year's version of the maritime vessel. Second of all, I had the opportunity, along with several other council members in there, to attend the groundbreaking ceremony for the Jamestown Callum new resort. And my congratulations to Ron and his brother, Jeff?
Jerry.
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 Jerry. The Hallen brothers. Especially Ron, I did have a little chat with Ronnie afterwards. And again, my congratulations to them. It looks like the first-rate facility and a $40 million project. They're also putting in criminal justice system there also. So congratulations again to the Jamestown Callum Tribe for their ambitious project. It's going to be a $40 million project vote. And then finally, I would like to let everybody know that next, not next Monday, Monday, the 18th and 19th, the North Olympic Peninsula Development Council is putting on a broadband symposium for two days. And again, will be hosted by the Jamestown Callum Tribe. It's talking about bringing high-speed internet to the peninsula. Specifically, the McCoak and the whole tribe are going to be very interested in it. They're going to be part of a panel discussion about the problem and the delivery of high-speed broadband or high-speed internet through broadband to the peninsula. There's legislation currently in Olympia regarding this. And there is also legislation on the federal level. And at lunch tonight that day, we'll have an update on the federal ambitions when it comes to broadband. But if you're at all interested in high-speed internet broadband capabilities here on the peninsula, I would encourage you to attend either one or both days of this broadband symposium. Again, it's March 18th and 19th, and it will be at the Jamestown. And you can give me a call if you're interested in how to register for it. But I'm super excited about it because it will allow us to bring more of these type of home office businesses to the community because they definitely need to avail themselves of high-speed internet to be able to communicate around the world. So anyway, thank you.
This has been a really busy week with a lot of meetings, so the MRSCs, things are moving in the science community as to, I don't know, with the ORCA, the governor incident, ORCA, well, not meetings, but the renovations. So there's some support for that. The North City Committee is looking into the building. I know that the building is going to need a roof and so we're working on that. I appreciate your comment on the Narcan because it's not just saving their lives, but it's also changing how people save lives. And so I think that's really important as we're building and we work for each other. Had another couple of leads on the south. Had another couple of meetings on the south, south what? I got 30 wrong, probably. But there's some interest in here in town. And it's very nice to see that we've got a couple of folks that are looking at Port Angeles for more multifamily homes hopefully in the future. So that's what we're doing. Then we got, we had a lot of conversations this month about AWCs with folks from Act III, from folks who are building them, potentially moving that over as well. Climate change is also being another conversation happening. And so we're slowly moving that. Commerce, Department of Commerce said that they are interested in helping us fund to get that project done. But they, well, we're not going to be able to know anything until June, when their, when their funding starts coming through. So, so we'll have more conversations with them, you know, give or take beginning of June and seeing where that is and seeing if they, they will be able to raise some. But they were very excited and they were very interested. So, so I thought that that was really nice. And that's really about it. I said lots of conversations around housing and we are going to be forward. So, so thank you all for the hard work that you all do.
Can I remark a comment? Just want to clarify that my thanks to the Laura L. Fallon Tribe has gone to dig along the parks department because more an issue of the weather that we've been having and the fact that the folks they wanted to use were a bit snowy and or muddy and mucky. So not at all, anything with the Parks Department doesn't anything about.
No, it's.
All right. So council manager.
Madam Mayor, council, we have a number of items for your information this evening. I'm going to start though by mentioning that items, item L3 is actually an item that we'll need to postpone to the next meeting. That was an update on interim planning management. We need to postpone that to the March 19th meeting at this point. In addition to that, I'd like Director Brecky to point out a small correction to the building permit report that was in your packet. And I do have a number of items after she's done that.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I, Carrie is going to help me out. I'm just actually giving an updated sheet for the 2018 annual building report. What we caught actually was a missing multifamily residential project. And I'll make sure that was there. We looked, we're looking at about a total of $20 million, $500,000 for total project value. That is slightly less than last year. But however, the number of permits are staying consistent. So the course valuation of projects can be, you know, up and down. But the number of permits is going to increase. We continue to see the highest number of permits being in the repair and alteration category. So that's about $12 million in project value between commercial and residential projects. Mayor, Madam Mayor just mentioned accessory structures. That's, that's actually shown in the number of 11 for new accessory structures. Those are our accessory building units.
That's great thinking.
And lastly, we are continuing to do some work on our tracking system. We are going to pass this information over to our consultant, who's still in housing business. And I can answer any questions if I have. Also, the numbers for January should be included in your packet, and they do not have a correction.
Just a quick question. When the new accessory structures, it says, number of units issued are 11. Total project valuation $274,000. So do we have, mean that on average, it's about $170,000 per accessory building?
We probably shouldn't go there because a lot of these are actually using existing buildings. And so you're going to see a very big difference in cost between new accessory structure being built and then an existing garage being changed into AWCs.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you for that report.
Continuing on that America makes, some of the other updates that I have for you. I do want to follow up. Councilmember Dexter did point out that we, AWC has scheduled a lobbying day recognizing that the city action days was canceled. And so we did anticipate the same group would try to go down during those lobby days. Councilmember French was selected as an alternate. And at this point, if, if councilmember Dexter isn't able to make it, we would assume that we would move forward with that. That would be on the 25th of March. And in addition to that, I want to point out, we have a pretty tight schedule relative to our cost of service assessment. And we started with the water utility last week before UAC. And I wanted to highlight some of the upcoming UAC meetings where we will also invite the full council to attend to get the informational presentations on each of those utility COSAs. The first one is on March 12th. And that will take place from 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM. All of them are consistent with the UAC schedule of 3:00 PM to 5:00 PM timeframe. April 9th, which is solid waste. April 23rd, which will be the electric COSA. May 14th, which will be a UAC rate method recommendation. And then finally, on May 21st, we do anticipate bringing it forward for council action. In addition to those items, I want to bring council's attention to the fact that we do have a draft work plan for 2019 completed. We can, we'd be happy to provide you copies of that this evening. If you prefer to get it via email, we can also send it to you that way. In addition to that, as part of the work plan, we have a meeting scheduled for the year. So that we essentially have a council calendar so that the council can better anticipate many of those items as they're going to be coming before you throughout the year. And so we do have a draft calendar that we're also passing out to you this evening. And just know that it's a work in progress, that those are approximate dates for the time being. And we continue to work on implementing all of those work plan items. And as we do, we'll be updating this calendar. So hopefully that's helpful and that does conclude my report this evening.
Thank you so much. This is, this is very helpful. I appreciate this. All right. So with that, we are now to the second color commentary. So anybody in the audience who would like to speak to council on any AWC order, to the second color and state your name from the record and whether you live in the city or not.
Should I use the camera at the podium over there? Yeah. My name is Jeffrey Belay and I've lived in the city, P.O., by surprise of mine. Today, I was downtown and up by the courthouse there where the bell is. And I drove through town probably about five or six times today and saw some people climbing on the bell, going to bathrooms over there, doing different stuff like that. As a veteran and as somebody who takes veterans' priority very seriously, I look at this as a disgrace to what the bell stands for. People are using it to, it's cool to be there, people to relax and to have a nice time. But these people are using it to climb on it, do whatever they're doing. And that kind of irritates me even as a veteran. Now, they have a right to be there, but they do not have a right to climb on it or do any of that other stuff that they're doing over there. But like I said, it is probably 12 to 8 to 12 people over there today. That's quite a good people there just to be where that bell is. That bell is put out there for our veterans when they pass so that we can call their names and ring that bell in memory of their service. Thank you so much. You had a great evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Matt Miller. I live here in the city. I didn't have plans to comment today, but since nobody else brought it up, I figured someone ought to. Usually reasonably quick to point out when I think we could be doing things better. So just as a change of pace, I want to point out something I think we as a community did really, really well recently. My wife and I and some friends, gosh, tons and tons of neighbors volunteered on Friday for our project Homeless Connect over at Vern Bern. And it's something we've done for a few years. I mean, I don't know how long the community's done it, but my wife and I have done it since we've lived here. We even have a friend who comes in from California every year just because he's so blown away by what he sees there. And it's genuinely inspirational to see all of our neighbors get together and give folks, our least fortunate neighbors, food and clothing, some medical checkups, help with documentation. Dental folks are there. I was a haircut receptionist for the first time ever. There are a few hours, that's a lot of fun. And even though it's something not particularly important in the grand scheme of things, it was really neat to see folks sort of become physically transformed in a notable way and what that did for, for their moods, even in just half hour's time. It was just really cool. One, one young guy was 14 years old and he had a bounce in his step when he walked away from something as simple as a haircut. It's sort of things we can sort of take for granted. And, you know, I heard when we were talking about more serious issues like what Amy and Daniel do or the Narcan and training. We're talking about these great big events that can help someone sort of find a turning point when things maybe aren't going their way. It's pretty cool to think that hundreds of people had an opportunity to have some sort of little turning point on Friday. And it was something that, you know, dozens of us got together to do for free. I didn't have a big, I just wanted to sort of congratulate us as a community for doing, doing something really well. Thanks.
Thank you. The number was about 311 folks. And they, part of all the different options, about six options per person. All right. Anybody else in the audience? Seeing one, I guess we are now adjourned. Thanks.